I will now call to order the meeting of the Omaha Planning Board. The Planning Board members that are here today are Sidney Franklin, Jeff Moore, Patrick Morris, Michael Pate, Jorge Soto Longo, Dave Rosacher is Vice Chair, and I am Greg Rosenbaum Chairman. Members of the city staff that are in attendance today are Dave Fanslaw Planning Director, Eric England Assistant Planning Director, Mike Carter Current Planning Manager, Jennifer Taylor of the City Law Department, and Kathy Epperson is our Recording Secretary. Our rules of procedure are as follows. Notice of this hearing has been published. Copies of today's agenda are located on the table in front of us. You're welcome to come down and pick one up. The cases on the consent agenda will be heard first. Consent cases have been recommended for layover, have already been heard, or are perceived by the Planning Board to be noncontroversial. Therefore, they will be read and voted on without the opportunity for you to state your opinion on the case. If you wish to have this case discussed during this hearing, you may remove the case from the consent agenda. To do so, when each consent case is read, I will ask if anyone wants the case removed for discussion. If you do, please stand up and say so, and the case will be removed. This case will then be heard after we vote on the cases that remain on consent. When the case is heard, you'll have the opportunity to come to the podium, clearly state your name and address, and give your testimony at that time. When hearing cases on the regular agenda, the Board will first hear from the applicant. After the applicant states their case, we will hear from the proponents, and then we will hear from the opponents. After both sides are heard, the public hearing will be closed, and no additional testimony will be permitted unless a Board member requests additional information. When at the podium, please clearly state your name, address, and whom you're representing for the record. Your testimony is very important to us, and in the interest of time and courtesy to others, please be short and to the point. We will try to limit each case to 10 minutes. Those directly involved in the case, please speak first. We request that large groups select a spokesperson to represent that group, therefore eliminating repetitive testimony. When giving testimony, please provide new information and try not to repeat what has been previously said. We do ask that all speakers and others be treated with courtesy and with respect. In that regard, please remain silent while seated, and please turn off your cellphones. Our decision to approve, deny, or continue a case made here today will be forwarded to the City Council for another public hearing and final disposition by the City Council. Conditional use permits are an exception to this rule. The Board's decision made here today on conditional use permits are final and not forwarded to the City Council. Lastly, upon the advice of the Law Department, all communications to the Board members from attorneys or other interested parties should be transmitted through the Planning Department so that they are made a part of the public record. The Department will then transmit all that information to the Board as well as to the rest of the public. A current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act can be found in a white binder in this room. There are no changes to the consent agenda, so I will get ready reading those consent cases. Again, if you want a case removed from consent because you came down here to discuss it, you have to stand up and let me know when I read that case. Okay, we'll get started. Agenda item number nine, case C-3-24-148. Applicant, Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. It is on consent for approval. Request approval of the disposition of city-owned property. Location, 1509 Corby Street, 1526 Willis Ave., 1529 Willis Ave., 1530 Willis Ave., 3426 North 36th Street, 3474 Grand Ave., 3478 Grand Ave., 3810 Wirth Street, 4524 Blondo Street, 4708 North 17th Street, 4901 Military Ave., 4925 North 17th Street, and 4962 North 18th Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 10, case C-3-24-149. Applicant, Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. It is on for consent for approval. Request approval of the disposition of city-owned property. Location, 1550 North 17th Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 11, case C-3-24-150. Applicant, Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. It is on consent for approval. Request approval of the disposition of city-owned property. Location, 3116 North 16th Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 12, case C-3-24-152. Applicant, Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. It is on for approval. Request approval of disposition of city-owned property. Location, 3802 North 24th Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 14, case C-12-24-137. Applicant SOS LLC. It is on for approval. Request preliminary and final plat approval of Sanctuary Ridge Replat 1, a minor plat outside city limits with approval of a waiver to Section 5384D Lot Frontage. Location, north of West Center Road and Sanctuary Ridge Drive. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 15, case C-10-11-152. Applicant, Nebraska Medical Center. It is on for approval. Request preliminary and final plat approval of Briggs Place Replat 12, a minor plat inside city limits with rezoning from GO and GC to GO and TOD 2 MX along with a repeal of the ACI overlay for a portion of the site. Location, southwest of 41st Street and Farnum Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 16, case C-12-24-147. C-10-11-151. Applicant, Thompson, Dreeson, and Dorner, Inc. It is on for approval. Request preliminary and final plat approval of Boyd's Edition Replat 5, a minor plat inside city limits along with a repeal of the ACI overlay district. Location, 3030 Sprague Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 17, case C-10-15-299. Applicant, Western Springs Land Corp. It is on for approval. Request approval of a major amendment to the mixed-use development agreement for Shadowview Village. Location, northwest of HWS Cleveland Boulevard and West Center Road. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 19, case C-10-24-142. Applicant, Rodolfo Gomez. It is on for approval. Request rezoning from HI to R4. Location, 6014 South 26th Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 20, case C-10-24-143. Applicant, Jesus Gomez. It is on for approval. Request rezoning from HI to R4. Location, 2603 Y Street and 2615 Y Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 21, case C-7-24-56. Applicant, BDS Properties. It is on for approval. Request approval of a major amendment to the planned unit development overlay district along with approval of a conditional use permit to allow single-family attached in the R4 district. Location, east of 80th and Reed Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 22, case C-10-24-140. Applicant, TFL, Inc. It is on for approval. Request rezoning from GC to CC. Property is located within an ACI area of civic importance overlay district. Location, 7059 Dodge Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 26, case C-7-99-130. Applicant, The Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. It is on for approval. Request approval of a major amendment to a conditional use permit to allow religious assembly in the R4 35 district. Location, southeast of 34th and State Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, agenda item number 26 will be removed. Agenda item number 25, case C-8-21-150. Applicant, Nebraska HBPA. It is on consent for layover. Request approval of a major amendment to the special use permit to allow indoor entertainment and outdoor entertainment in the GI district along with approval of a major amendment to the large project special use permit to allow development over 10 acres in the GI district. Property is located within the Flood Fringe, Flood Way, and major commercial corridor overlay district. Location, 6303 Q Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Those are the items that were on consent. Do we have a motion for the consent items that were on for approval?
Make a motion to approve case number 9, 10, 11, 12, 14, 15, 16, 17, 19, 20, 21, and 22.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Rosacher?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Soto Longo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, but I have to abstain on agenda item number 17.
Approved.
Okay, do we have a motion for the consent cases that were on for layover?
Motion to layover, agenda item number 25.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Soto Longo?
Yes.
Rosacher?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Okay, so those cases that were on consent and were left on consent, no further action will be taken today. We appreciate you coming down. You are welcome to stay and watch the proceedings, or you are free to leave. We had one case that was taken off consent. That was agenda item number 26. Case C-7-99-130. Applicant, The Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. It was on for approval. Like I said, it was taken off. Request approval of a major amendment to a conditional use permit to allow religious assembly in the R4 35 district. Location, southeast of 34th and State Streets. Is the applicant here? You can come on down and give your name and address, please, and an explanation of what you're doing.
Hi, I'm Mark Detlef, Airheart Griffin Associates, 3552 Farnum Street. I'm here on behalf of the owner, on behalf of the civil engineer for the project. It is my understanding that this is for to construct in addition to the parking lot as required by the Planning Department. I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Any other proponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Just a reminder, please give your name and address.
Okay, I'm Ann Musil.
Ann?
Ann, A-N-N. Musil, M-U-S-I-L. And I'm at 8024 North Ridge Drive. Do you need my zip code?
No.
So, we do appreciate the Mormon temple being near us. Like, they do a great job with, like, keeping their landscaping and everything great. They take care of their properties. But we just were kind of blindsided by this. They didn't come and talk to us beforehand, just talking to us about that they wanted to expand the parking lot. I feel like it would have been common courtesy to involve us and maybe just kind of ask us since it is going to be impacting us. We want to know, like, how close it's going to get to our property line. We also want to know, like, with the parking lot, it's kind of more on a hill. So, do they have a plan for the water runoff? And is that going to go into our houses? We're worried about that. We're worried about, like, how it's going to impact our property taxes. And we also just really enjoy the wildlife in the area, and it's going to take a lot of trees out of those lots. So, and then the last thing is just with the dumpster and the shed, like, is there any way that you could put it closer to 34th Street instead of right in, like, the backyard? That's pretty loud, the dumpster, when it's being dumped several times a week. So, we would appreciate that. Is there anything you want to include? He's a neighbor as well.
Yeah, my name's Dennis Wade. 8104 North Ridge Drive. 34th Street, that is impassable. I mean, it's terrible. You can't get up and down it. I mean, you can, but you could fall off, your vehicle could fall off the side of the street. And like Ann said, you know, I don't want to repeat myself, but it's a concern because I have got a major hill in our backyard. And something, if they start removing a lot of trees and a lot of ground and don't cut that hill down, we're going to end up with a lot of water in our basements. That's my concern. So, that's all I've got.
Thank you, Dennis. Any other opponents? Okay, seeing none of closed public hearing. Mark, did you want to come forward and give you the opportunity to address their concerns?
Yeah, I'll do my best to address as many concerns as I'm able to. Again, I'm not the signing engineer for this project, but I will do my best. For their concern about the water runoff, I can say that we will be capturing and treating and retaining all the runoff from this parking lot and per City of Omaha standards, releasing that back into the system. I know this plan does call for removal of trees for the addition of the parking lot and then other improvements to land. I am more than happy to arrange a meeting with anybody, residents, neighbors, with the project manager to discuss these plans. I'm also more than happy to inform the owner of any concerns that are brought up here today, but...
Would you meet with Dennis and Ann after the...
For sure, yeah.
After the meeting?
I can definitely do that.
Okay. Is there anything else you're available to comment on?
At this time, no.
Anything about the dumpster? Do you know anything?
I do not know much about the dumpster.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mark.
Yes.
Closed public hearing. Any additional comments or questions? Eric might be able to help out here with some of those questions.
Yeah, so our Public Works Department has stormwater runoff and drainage requirements for any new paving. So, the parking lot addition will be accounted for, you know, and I don't know what the drainage situation is at this time, but usually with the new requirements for new proposals and parking lots and buildings, it can be helpful to existing conditions. So, there are requirements that will need to be followed as far as in part of the permitting process for the parking lot expansion. 34th Street will be improved to public work standards for a street for the segment adjacent to the new parking lot area. So, I know it's very rough right now, absolutely. So, even though this is a short distance, it doesn't go, you know, the length of 34th Street, of course, but it will be a small improvement and definitely for the adjacency of the impacted site. The parking lot, you know, or the dumpster location, it looks like it's very similar to what is shown on the aerial image. It is perhaps being moved a bit to the east. It's shown on the site plan. It does comply with codes. There are screening component to that dumpster, but, you know, obviously, we would encourage the property owner and the applicant to continue conversations with adjacent neighbors to make sure that they're lessening any impact of that dumpster location to the best of their ability. So, I don't have anything else unless there's questions from the Board. Staff recommends approval of a major amendment to the conditional use permit subject to the seven conditions in the recommendation report.
Okay. Any additional questions, comments? Do we have a motion?
I will move approval of a major amendment to a conditional use permit subject to the seven conditions outlined in the staff report.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Soto Longo?
Yes.
Rosacher?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Okay, thank you. Agenda items one through four are administrative only. There will be no opportunity for public testimony. Agenda item number one, case C-12-23-192. Applicant, REI Funding Group LLC. Request final plat approval of Hanson's Country Club Hills Replat 4, a subdivision inside city limits. Location, northeast of 72nd Street and Silver Valley Road.
Eric? Yeah, so this final plat is for 13 single-family lots and one outlot. The preliminary plat was recommended for approval by Planning Board on October 4th and approved by City Council on December 5th. The final plat is in compliance and with that approved preliminary plat, there's nothing I feel necessary to point out at this time. So, staff recommends approval of the final plat subject to submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to City Council.
Any comments or questions? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the final plat subject to submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to City Council.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Soto Longo?
Yes.
Rosacher?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Agenda item number two, case C-10-12-179. C-10-24-70. C-12-24-71. Applicant, University of Nebraska Board of Regents. Request final plat approval of Saddle Creek Campus, a subdivision inside city limits with rezoning from GI, GO, GC, and CC to TOD 1 MX, TOD 2 MX, and CC along with a repeal of the ACI overlay for a portion of the site. Location, southwest of Farnum Street and Saddle Creek Road. Eric?
Yeah, so this final plat creates six lots. It's on the west side of Saddle Creek Road. There was a previous final plat that had been approved by Planning Board and City Council, but due to an ownership issue, one of the lots was removed, and that was never recorded after that City Council approval. So, the preliminary plat that is consistent with this final plat was approved by City Council on April 23rd. The applicant will need to continue coordinate and comply and provide all improved improvements identified in the final traffic study. Staff recommends approval of the repeal of the ACI overlay, approval of the rezoning from GI, GO, GC, and CC to TOD 1 MX, TOD 2 MX, and CC, and approval of the final plat subject to addressing the two conditions in the report prior to City Council.
Any comments or questions? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the repeal of the ACI overlay, approval of the rezoning from GI, GO, GC, and CC to TOD 1 MX, TOD 2 MX, and CC, and the approval of the final plat subject to addressing the two conditions of staff report prior to Council.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Soto Longo?
Yes.
Rosacher?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Agenda item number three, case C-10-24-77. C-12-24-78. Applicant, Falcone Land Development LLC. Request final plat approval of Blondo Point, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to DR and R4. Location, northwest of 209th and Blondo Streets. Eric?
Yeah, so this final plat would be for 379 single-family lots. The majority of those are standard suburban lot with a handful of them being over the ridge and needing to be on a septic system on the very western edge of the property. There's also five outlots. The preliminary plat was approved by Planning Board on March 6th and City Council on April 9th. There will be, as discussed in the pre-meeting, construction of a roundabout at the intersection of Skyline Drive and Blondo Street. I know we had quite a bit of conversation on the street network, so we do have Public Works here for any questions that the Board may have. Other than that, staff recommends approval of the rezoning from AG to DR and R4, and approval of the final plat subject to submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement and tree canopy analysis prior to City Council.
I do have a comment. I'm a, I know there was a limited traffic study done and approved by a... and approved by City Works. I still have questions, or I shouldn't say questions, concerns about traffic coming in and out of this area. A lot of homes. It does fit zoning and so I just wanted to make my concern stated. So, any other comments or questions? Do we have a motion?
I'll move for the approval of the rezoning from AG to DR and R4 and approval of the final plat subject to submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement and tree canopy analysis prior to forwarding the request.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved seven to zero.
Agenda item number four, case C-10-22-310, C-12-22-311. Applicant First Management Inc. Request final plat approval of Pacific Court, formerly Pacific Rose, a subdivision inside city limits with rezoning from R1 to R4. Location 9402 Pacific Street. Eric?
Yeah, so we have seen this site a number of times over the last handful of years. The latest version, which is consistent with the approved preliminary plat that came before this board's September and then approved by City Council on October 31st, does plat the site into eight single-family residential lots and one outlot for a private street. There was a previous Chapter 53 waiver to modify the sidewalk location. It is being provided, but it is a curb walk based on the private street and the terrain of the site. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning from R1 to R4 and then approval of the final plat subject to an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to City Council.
Any comments or questions? Do we have a motion?
I move approval of the rezoning from R1 to R4 and approval of the final plat subject to submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to forwarding the request onto City Council for final action.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved seven to zero.
Yeah. That ends the administrative part of the meeting. We'll move on to public meeting. We're going to take agenda items number five and six together. Case C-12-23-170. Applicant Keith Edquist. Request preliminary plat approval of Stargrass Acres, formerly Northern Hills Estates IV, a subdivision outside city limits with a waiver to Section 5399 sidewalks and 53910 streetscape standards to waive installation of streetlights. This was laid over from our May meeting. Location 6820 Northern Hills Drive. And agenda item number six, case C-8-23-182. Applicant Keith Edquist. Request approval of a special use permit to allow development in the ED North Hills Environmental Resources Overlay District. Also laid over from our May meeting. Location 6820 Northern Hills Drive. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good afternoon. Elizabeth Hunter with Snyder and Associates. I'm the engineer and planner for the project. The address is 11850 Nicholas. And we've gone over the location and all the back and forth before, so I won't get into that stuff. But basically, at the last meeting, we talked about doing some coordination with the Irvington Volunteer Fire Department and they are in the process of working with their engineer. But there are parts of, I'm going to show something on the screen here, so... There are parts of the project that can proceed without that coordination and so that's what we have been working with the planning and Public Works Departments on trying to achieve now. And so that's what we are looking for approval to move on to. So the project, I can't zoom out any further, but the project consists of two lots down here to the south of the road in question that would connect to the fire department area that's over here. And so we are looking to, there's a road over here in the Ponca Hills development and the yellow on this map indicates like where we would do a temporary turnaround. And then we would proceed with the private road that is back here and the lots that are included for that private road. And then this lot here, six, is the lot that Mr. Edquist lives on now and planning had asked for that to be included in this Phase One since there's an existing house on it. We're not including the outlot that's right in front of that because we're not exactly sure what the shape will end up to be once we get the road down here worked out. Like if this road needs to change to match something else, it will change this area over here on the west side. And so that's why the outlet part of it is not into the project right now. So those are the basics of where we're at now. And if you have any questions about that or anything else that we've previously talked about, I am happy to answer any of it.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents?
Good afternoon. Jason LaFerrier, Assistant Chief Irvington Fire Department, 7111 Stargrass Road. As Ms. Hunter stated, we met with R&amp;W Engineering first part of this week. That was their first available meeting time. I gave them the plan that Ms. Hunter had came up with, with the curvature of the road and the new layout. And they've, we went out and drove the site and they think that they can get it to work as it's originally plotted. So they're currently in the process of coming up with a design that makes sure it meets city standard and they're going to get that to me as soon as they can. I don't have a date from them, but they are working on it as we speak. But I'd also like to bring up part of an email that I received since the May board meeting from Ryan Haas, Private Plans Engineer with the City of Omaha. Quote, "Also note that the Planning Department placed a building permit hold on all of the unbuilt lots in Smokey Ridge," the development I live in, "until solution to the street connection issue has been reached, potentially including proceeding with design and construction of the improvements and any other required processes to accomplish the connection." If this is going to be imposed on the fire department lots, then I think the same thing should happen to Keith Edquist with his Stargrass Acres I property. A letter dated August 19, 2019, was sent by the City Attorney's Office regarding his Northern Hills Estates I through III and forming the HOAs. If we are going to be held accountable for the connection road piece, then he needs to be held accountable for forming the contractual obligation of forming the HOAs. Discrimination is a word that, kind of a hot topic these days. So discrimination on who is held accountable and who isn't held accountable is another hot topic. Now, I don't know if, I don't think Keith is here or if Elizabeth is going to come up and say anything because they get that opportunity to come up after us. But Keith has stated to you guys before that he's tried to get the residents to form an HOA. Trying doesn't mean nothing. At the end of the day, it's his responsibility to see that through. And if he's going to ignore the letter from the City Attorney's Office, I think there should be some repercussions on him as well. Maybe holding his project up or putting a hold on his properties as well. That's all I have.
Thank you, Jason. Any other opponents?
Good afternoon. My name's Andrew Skarka, 6637 Pawnee Circle. My lot backs up to the proposed plan. Elizabeth showed a moment ago something that, let's see. What do we hit on here? Source? Oh, there we go. Okay. That's not going to help much. Let me help.
Elizabeth, could you?
Here we go. This should work here. So on the back, this is just an example of what Elizabeth showed as Phase One. This is a video of what recently happened with the rain. If you'll notice off to the left side there, there is a river flowing down and this is the proposed Lot One, or this is the Phase One. That's where the proposed road would be and there's a significant amount of flooding that's happening in the back. I don't see how this would be possible to build upon. This is where we were last year when we had this very similar conversation and the rebuttal was it was a hundred-year flood that caused this last year. We're twelve months in advance and we're looking at similar, if not worse, issues. How are we going to be able to build a road particularly right here when it's already flooding? I have concerns with that. Furthermore, I did send additional email with several documents that showed other photos that included damage from the water and how much it was flowing over. Days after, this is where the flooding still sits.
What direction are we looking?
We are now looking west. This would be smack dab in the middle of what Elizabeth showed as Phase One.
And where the, I'm guessing those are trees that are planted, the white?
Yeah, that's my backyard.
Okay, that's your backyard?
Yep.
You're looking west out of your?
My backyard stops right around here and then this is proposed Phase One.
And where that water is, you're saying that's where the street is proposed?
Correct. Correct, yes, sir. As you can see, it's not a small amount of water. My backyard has already dried up at this point in time and this is what's left over in proposed Phase One. Adding septic on top of this, we're looking at a disaster for five people. I ask you to reconsider. Any questions?
Okay, thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
Any other opponents?
Can I zoom in to that?
Yeah, on top.
I see. There you got it. Okay, my name is R. Scott Camp. I'm at 13326 North 66th Street.
What was your first name?
R. Scott Camp, C.A.M.P. And I'm at 13326 North 66th Street. My property is just north of the Edquist property. My property's on heads east from that corner. And then it's the ten-acre parcel to the north and then the rest of my parcel heads to the east, 1,320 feet. Mr. Edquist did address one of my original concerns when he first presented this back in the summer of 2023, in July. At that time, he was showing a street that was stubbing up to the north into my property. And since then, they've revised their plan to just put in a cul-de-sac instead of having it stub out to the north to hit my property and it would eventually continue further north onto the other two neighbors north of me. And there's probably very little chance of that land ever being subdivided from what it is now. Another concern I had was just the sheer number of lots that he's proposing to put in here. I know there's a limit on lot size to one acre, one acre minimum. But I'm proposing him to consider putting fewer lots in that area to create less impervious coverage, like from the roofs and the paving that would be on the streets. Now I think it'll be easier for them to create a drainage system to kind of retain some of the floodwater that we've witnessed over the last few years.
Does your property carry water at all?
My property, all drains. My property all drains to the west and this property drains to the north and crosses the north or the southwest corner of my property. But the majority of my property drains to the, to the west and then to the north and then to the east because I'm kind of on a high point in the neighborhood. We do have a detention basin about midway on our property. And after this five-inch rain, we had that detention basin retain quite a bit of water. And I've witnessed that, quite a bit of water being retained in that from previous storms like we had in, we had a really rainy season in 2019 that caused a lot of flooding everywhere. And so I think there's more things that can be done, maybe possibly with fewer lots on the property to help collect all that storm drainage. So those are my main concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other opponents? Okay, seeing none, closed public hearing. Additional comments, questions? I'll bring Elizabeth up, but anybody have any? Elizabeth, did you want to come up and address concerns?
Sure. The issue that Jason brought up about the Northern Hills Homeowners Association, I was not involved with that and don't really know all the details, but I'm sure Michael and Ryan and Brian do. So maybe they can provide some insight on where that stands and why it has or has not moved in whatever direction it's supposed to. So I would urge you to get some information from them about that because I don't have any firsthand knowledge about that. But the reason that that measure came up, that Ryan had sent the email stating that, is because since last summer, when we were first meeting with you, I had tried to make contact with Jason and/or the fire department to get some further coordination and they stopped communicating with us fully. They weren't responding in any way. So when I had shared that information back to Ryan, they said, "Well, if they're not going to be cooperative, the measures that we have are..." And he listed out some things and said he needed to go talk to legal and that is a decision that they made as a Public Works and Planning Department that that's what they wanted to do to make sure that we got the cooperation that needed to be done for this to move forward. So that's kind of where that all came from and you would have to talk to Ryan further about if there were other options that he was considering with legal about how to get that, you know, to move off of not moving at all. For the rain situation that was brought up with the flooding happening, we are actually planning something a little bit different with this development. I'm just going to use this map again because I think it shows it the best. So with the private drive that we are going to be doing, the road will be as least wide as allowed, which is 22 feet because it's a private road, so we are reducing pavement as much as we can with that. We will also be planning that on this side of the road that the water would be dumping off and being allowed to infiltrate and drain around, you know, any of the grassy areas as it comes down the hill. We're not going to use curb and gutter to bring it all the way down to the bottom because we've just concentrated the water worse. And by doing what we're planning on, the water would have opportunities to get to... water would have opportunities to get to a rain garden that we're installing here, 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 and then overflow would come through the ditch back here to a larger rain garden and detention area that is back here. So we've, oh, sorry. So we are dealing with the water situation that we know is happening everywhere in town, and we're trying to give measures that would help. We believe that a solution like this is better than what the standard code is to just take it all in curb and gutter and dump it into one pond in the back. Keith doesn't like that, and that he's been pushing to try to do these rain gardens since last summer. We've finally worked it out with Public Works, and they are on board with that as being maintained by the Homeowners Association. We've turned in the extensive information from Keith's lawyer that they've developed about how that will all work. The maintenance will not be the homeowners for these, it will be the Homeowners Association. This is a villa concept-type development where all lawn and snow removal and the rain garden maintenance will be through the Homeowners Association, so.
Your Homeowners Association just for these lots?
Yes. There, the other two lots that are down here would have their own different type of situation, but as you can see, we also have rain gardens planned up here to try to capture as much water as we can so that it's not going to the north. And we've already done the infiltration testing for that to show that the soils as they are don't need much amendment to be able to allow for infiltration through these rain gardens. So that is kind of where the situation is with the water flow and large rain-type situation.
Before we leave that topic there, so, maybe I should know this, but I don't. Explain what a rain garden does. And the video that we saw was fairly compelling with the amount of water that was flowing through that property. How will that all, if we have that type of rain again or flooding, how will these rain gardens control that issue?
This is, let me try to fold this up here. This is kind of like a cross-section detail of the rain garden and bio, the bioretention pond is the one in the far back, the bigger one. And so what these do is they have different kinds of plantings in them that are mostly native-type things that have deep root systems and help the soils maintain its infiltration capacities. As the root systems grow for these, it helps with the infiltration getting deeper, because the roots, you know, help keeping things flow down. So the pockets that we've developed on the site plan will hold the water and be infiltrating it instead of sending it downstream to the bioretention cell. Then the bioretention cell back here, any water that does get back there, it has the same thing, it's larger, but it has the same abilities and plantings to be able to infiltrate as much water as possible, but there is like an emergency outflow pipe here that would follow. The natural drainage kind of goes like back this way. And so the emergency outflow back here would go that way for the overtopping-type situation that we were to run into. You know, we all, when we design these things, we all design to the same city code. Can we design for, you know, larger storms? Sure, but do we? No, it's cost prohibitive.
So is that the, I mean, most detention systems are set up for the first half-inch off of the impervious, right? Is that how these are calculated or not?
These are actually a little bit bigger than that, but yes, right now, they're set up to meet the basic code, but they exceed it by some. And we have a full stormwater report that's been turned in to Public Works about that, so. Further questions on the?
Eric, are you going to cover this a little bit as well in your comments? Because I'm not completely sold on it.
Well, that's a little bit out of planning's realm, because obviously, a division in Public Works does that review. You know, obviously, that's not Ryan Hauss's expertise, but he could probably speak to it a little better than I can, but there are very detailed review and calculations, and I know those individuals are involved in the, in the comment, you know, period, and providing that information that goes into the report. So I know of no concerns from Public Works at this point, but perhaps Ryan has additional information if you want to ask him.
And all of this that Elizabeth has been talking about with these, what do you call them, rain gardens, has been presented to planning?
Yes.
You've seen them?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, and we've actually been through a couple iterations with Public Works already through permix on comments to address the concerns that Brian Lotus has brought to our attention, and so we've already responded to last month's comments and this month's comments, so he has all that most updated information. I think that really covers all of the comments that were brought up.
Do you have a question about the number of lots?
Sure. We're meeting code with the one-acre lots. This is the number of lots that Keith wants for his project. He does not have any intention of making it less. So that's kind, I mean, we're, we, if you, let me show one more exhibit here. What Keith wants with the Homeowners Association that he's created is that he has full control of where the houses go so that the people who would be building would be doing the least disturbance to trees out there. He wants to preserve as many of the trees as he can, and we have that shown on one of these sheets here where the build areas are. I'm trying to find where that is, which one's going to be the best. Actually, back to this one. So the areas that would be allowed to be built are actually these outer lines, which go way further back, and then we've reduced the buildable areas in each lot to the places where I've got them hatched. So even though they would be allowed to build basically twice as much, you know, area by what the setbacks in the code would allow, we've reduced what their build area would be by half of that, just to preserve the steep slopes. We've got a slope analysis that we've done, which is another requirement with the North Hills. So we've done this slopes analysis to keep build areas out of tree areas that Keith wants to preserve and to try to protect the steepest slopes out there as much as possible. So that's what drove us to decide how we were going to reduce these allowed areas to even smaller areas for buildability.
Elizabeth, could you keep that exhibit up, please?
Sure.
The board members don't have that exhibit. Is the green area, is that less than seventeen percent, and the yellow is between seventeen or thirty, or is that a different calculation?
The green areas are zero to sixteen percent, the yellow areas are seventeen to twenty-nine percent, and the red areas are thirty to one hundred percent.
Thank you.
So Keith lives on this property now, right?
Yes, he does. He lives in Lot Six.
And has he, do you know if he's experienced any rain issues or flooding issues on the property since he's been living there?
He has not mentioned anything to me, but I don't know how much he necessarily goes to this back area when it's raining. I mean, we've driven back there together in, you know, a golf cart, but not while it's raining or right after it's raining, so he hasn't mentioned anything to me about that in particular.
And there was a question, maybe, there was a question about the Homeowners Association for Smoky Ridge as well?
It was the Homeowners Association for the Northern Hills Estates Project, which is to the south. It's actually across the street to the south here. That's a project Keith did before I have been working for him, so I don't know the history.
But that doesn't exist, does it?
Oh, yes, it's a development that does exist, yes. Any other questions about anything?
Yeah, I'd like, no, I'd like to bring Ryan up.
Okay. I'll leave these things up here in case Ryan wants to use any of them.
Ryan, while you're coming up, maybe if you could just address the memo that you, the letter that you sent out for one thing, and then maybe just talk a little bit about these rain gardens.
Ryan Hauss at the Public Works Department, what, I'm sorry, what memo are you referring to?
The, the, the letter that you sent that they referred to in their testimony.
Oh, the email, yeah.
Yeah.
The-
If you can talk about those.
Yeah, the email is in response to the subdivision agreement in Smoky Ridge, contemplating the obligation for the Smoky Ridge subdivider to participate in the, or to provide for the extension of the connection at such time as the plat that we're looking at today develops, in addition to contributing fifty percent to the north-south connection down to Northern Hills Drive. So the avenue that the city felt was most appropriate was to just place a building permit hold to hopefully compel those, that cooperation and participation. Once, ideally, that there's a solution found to provide, that includes the connections as contemplated in the Smoky Ridge subdivision agreement, and those provisions are in place for the construction to take place, then at that time, those building permit holds would be released. Eric alluded to it, stormwater management is not my area of expertise, water resources. I rely on the other staff members in Public Works. We review plans at a high level. When they come in for planning board application, we respond to those plans with conditions of approval, including the ones you see on this plat today, and we have checks in place throughout the process to ensure that it's not just conceptual, it's not something on paper, that there are design reviews, both preliminary and then more detailed as it goes through the process, to ensure that by the time the final plat goes out the door, that the plat has been set up to successfully employ or deploy stormwater management features to meet the city code requirements. So I'm confident in our processes, and I, you know, I don't have the answers that, or the details, because that's not something that I necessarily get into on the actual review, but I do rely on those other staff members in Public Works to provide for that review.
Hey, Ryan, so the email that puts a hold on, on building there, how, how does that end, I guess? When they contribute or when they've come to an agreement on it, how does that, how does that become resolved, I guess?
Maybe that's a little bit open-ended. We just want to make sure that provisions are in place where there's, there's, we have the assurance that the funding is in place to provide for the construction of the improvements.
Hey, Ryan, on, just to elaborate on, on that, sometimes, you know, the engineering company for the development would put in the street with the contribution, you know, there's no simple cookie cutter answer when we're dealing with adjacent properties and, or sometimes different SIDs. There's no one-size-fits-all, you know, it can, it can vary depending on, you know, the construction element and the cost contribution. Is that accurate?
For the, did you determine the amount?
Well, with the amount or the actual installation of pavement, you know, it's not always, you know, two engineering companies doing the work. Sometimes there's consolidation and, you know, to make it one project.
That's correct, yeah. And just to be clear, we, we try to avoid this arrangement anymore going forward for the reasons that we're seeing on this project. We try to get them set up to where the first subdivision in just paves to their property line, provides a temporary turnaround, and demonstrates that the grading will work for a public street to be able to be connected. We've had ones in the past several years where you can see the street stub on the aerial, and then you go out in the field and it's on top of a cliff, and there's no actual way to, you know, essentially to tie into it. So that's something we, we've worked to try to avoid those situations going forward and get it towards a little bit cleaner, where the first subdivision comes in and puts in everything that they need to, and then they're done, and then on the back end, the second subdivision just connects to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Any additional comments or questions before we hear from Eric?
Eric?
Yeah, so just to touch on a few items, there are a couple of requests with the plat on today's agenda that for waivers of Chapter 53 as it relates to sidewalks and streetlights, we are not acting or recommending on those items at this time, so that's going to be a continued conversation point, so that would have to be addressed when the final plat comes in. Basically, we're not supportive of fully waiving sidewalks and fully waiving streetlights, so usually it's a combination of when you have the North Hills overlay district. We do support, you know, reduction of those items, but we want to make sure that it's a safe environment for, maybe it's pedestrians that are walking in the street because there's no sidewalks, and so I just wanted to point that out. There was also the comment in the report, and Elizabeth had mentioned it, a reduction of the street width to twenty-two feet that is typically supported. We don't have that waiver request on this item, so that would also have to, you know, come at the later date of the final plat. So we'll need to continue to coordinate with the applicant on those items. As far as, you know, the lot size, yes, the minimum requirement is one acre in size, which is very consistent with the two developments directly to the east of this site, as well as the Smoky Ridge development to the west, as well as to the Northern Hills Estates, three different phases to the south on Northern Hills Drive. I know that we have heard this issue in the North Hills or in Ponca, you know, a request for larger lots. That is something that is just currently under review. We are, you know, looking at the information and data. There's no promises that we would make any changes, but it's on our radar, and it's something that we've heard before, but the one-acre minimum is, is consistent with the code requirement and what has been developed in the surrounding developments to this site. I don't think I have much else to add on the drainage or rain guard. Yes, Mr. Rosekirk.
I just wanted to clarify something, because the exhibit she shows here is different than what's in our packet regarding phasing. It has Lot Six in Phase One, whereas what we have in our packet is in Phase Two, and I'm also a little concerned about Outlot Two, why that wouldn't also be included in Phase One.
Yeah, so the exhibit that is represented here on the screen, I think, is in response to what our recommendation report had identified of having Lot Six within the first phase. You know, as far as Outlot Two, I believe that is for tree mitigation purposes. We do also have comments that because the majority of the tree canopy that is impacted or destroyed within Phase One, that we want the tree mitigation to occur within Phase One and not push that off to the second phase. So how that impacts Outlot Two, I think that is going to be continued conversation, and that does have an impact on that east-west street, whether that's appropriate or needs to happen within Phase One or Phase Two. So those are some items that are hanging out there, but we are comfortable where it's at with the preliminary plat of, of having those conversations and meeting, go ahead.
And that would be the same thing to wrap up the stormwater thing, because in Lot Nine, basically, that, that all has to be provided to you with the final plat, right? So that we're satisfied that all stormwater concerns are being properly dealt with.
Yeah, absolutely, and as Elizabeth had testified to, there has been a lot of conversation with Brian Lotus and others potentially within that division of Public Works, so I'm aware of that, just from the short conversations that I've had with Brian leading up to, you know, today's meeting. So those conversations do need to continue, you know, it's not like it's finalized at this point. You know, just to touch briefly, I didn't, I didn't mention in the pre-meeting, because they are doing a good job of avoiding the steep slopes, so I think that exhibit showing the slopes analysis does a good job. We do have a comment about the building envelope, just making sure on Lot Two, there's maybe a little bit of conflicting information between the exhibits as it relates to that rain guard. rain guard or drainage basin. So we do have a comment and condition about that specific lot in the building envelope. As far as the mention from Jason about the, the letter, I'm vaguely familiar with that issue dealing with the Northern Hills Estates. I don't know what phase is. It is a, a bit different than the situation with Smoky Ridge with specific language in the subdivision agreement pertaining to development of this site, you know, but we will definitely follow up and look into the letter. I don't, you know, I wasn't directly involved with that issue, but we will, we will look into that matter, but by first appearances, that is a different issue, different site. Yes, it is the applicant of this development, but it is not related to the subject property. So, but we will look into it, but, you know, that could just be an entirely separate matter. So I just wanted to point that out. I think that's all that I have unless you have any follow-up questions. There are two agenda items. So if.
Case number five.
Yeah, so I'll make a recommendation on case number five. You can continue conversation, of course, amongst yourselves or ask questions of, of staff or members of the audience. But specifically for agenda item number five, staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat subject to the 22 conditions in the report.
Any additional comments or questions? Do we have a motion?
A motion to approve the preliminary plat subject to the 22 conditions in the recommendation report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Kate?
Just a comment before I vote. You know, communication is so important. Neighbors are here. Keith's adequacy representative is here. I heard some testimony today from Elizabeth that concerned me with regards to Keith's comments. Things like Keith doesn't like. Keith has no intention. We got to keep the conversations open on both sides in order for this to work. So I would encourage you to get together, continue to communicate, but do it in a positive way with an open mind so you can resolve any issues that you have, both parties. And because this is preliminary plat, I'm going to vote yes, but I want to see some results in the final plat. Fair enough?
Soto Longo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved seven to zero?
For agenda item six, staff recommends approval of a special use permit to allow development in the North Hills environmental overlay district subject to the five conditions in the report.
To the five conditions.
Second. Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Soto Longo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved seven to zero?
Just a point of order, that special use permit will not proceed to city council until the final plat does.
Applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha, request approval of the Active Mobility Plan. Location, City of Omaha and the three-mile extraterritorial, excuse me, jurisdiction. And Derek, you're up.
Good afternoon, members of the planning board, Derek Miller, City Planning Staff. So here to talk about the completed active mobility plan. As stated during the pre-meeting, this effort started in about August of '22 and a draft was made available March of this year. For the plan itself, like most plans, we had a couple advisory committee, one advisory committee and then a stakeholder committee. And the technical advisory committee consisted mostly of city staff, mayor's office and MAPPA. That group met on a monthly basis through the development of this plan. And then we had a community stakeholder committee that met pretty much on a quarterly basis. And really to, to go over the plan itself and its five chapters, so one through five here, and then we'll talk about some input that we got during the open comment period. So again, chapter one, background and existing conditions, goals and objectives for chapter two, network improvement for chapter three, policies and programs for four, and implementation and funding for five. On the, the background and existing conditions that the, the consultant put together, they looked at all plans that had active mobility components, like ConnectCo that was completed by the Chamber in 2021, MAPPA's long-term, long-range transportation plan that was completed in 2019, that's actually under revisement today, and then other plans that have been completed in the recent history. Consultant also looked at policies and programs that we have in place today, the, our municipal code, our six-year CIP, Omaha Vision Zero that was approved by city council last year, and then seven other policies and programs that were, that they considered as well. Some things that came out of this, the continued and stronger desire for increased multi-motor transportation in Omaha, identified significant existing barriers and gaps within our community and our jurisdiction, and then also talked about potential for a variety of citywide benefits. You can't read this, but what these maps are showing is existing sidewalk gaps that, that are in Omaha today in our jurisdiction, existing on-street facilities that we've developed over the last 15 or 20 or 20-so years, and then existing off-street facilities, basically our trail network that parks and the NRD have completed over the last many decades here. Chapter one also talked about bicycle level of service. What that is, is basically a, a level of measurement of how comfortable a bicycle facility is for a cyclist within the street. And what's included in bicycle level of service is the effective width of bicycle facilities, outside lane width of the street, traffic volume of the traffic on the street, pavement, surface condition, and then the presence of on-street parking. So A being the best and F being the worst. And you could see A there, that's a buffered bicycle facility. And on the right of that image is a, is a sidewalk with a, a buffer between the sidewalk and the street. And then you go all the way down to F where you see segments of Dodge Street, which aren't the best for cycling conditions, but as we talked this morning, people still ride on Dodge Street. The other thing that, as far as the existing conditions, the level of service, what the consultant did was evaluated over four, 500 miles of arterials and collectors, 4,000 segments. And on average, between pedestrian and bicycle level of service, there was a level of service C, so pretty much adequate. So the bicycle level of service results in this map, you can kind of read, but you can look at, basically the purple and red colors are the lower bicycle level of service. And then once you get to the greens, the blues, and the lighter greens, that's your higher level of bicycle level of service. And again, mentioning Dodge Street in the central part of Omaha, showing up very red as a very low level of bicycle level of service. Whereas in contrast to that, Leavenworth Street and St. Mary's show up as a level service A for the great majority of it, just because there is a, a buffered bicycle facility that exists on that street segment today. Other things the consultant looked at was demand analysis. Revealed demand is basically the counts of, existing counts of bicycle and pedestrian movements within our community from previous efforts within Omaha. So those are actual counts, bike counts and pedestrian counts that would be revealed demand. Lane demand is looking at potential destinations or origins and destinations that are popular and would assume there is no traffic. So that's latent demand. And then state of demand is through public engagement, talking to the members of the community where they feel they would like to see higher levels of bicycle infrastructure and pedestrian infrastructure. And I'll get into more of that in a little bit. So the latent demand results, this wasn't a surprise to us, but you can pretty much see the urban core of Omaha and it's on how it was developed in history. And it, it reveals a high level of latent demand, just with the grid of streets and mostly flat. But yeah, so there's, and, and we've known this for quite some time. So this, like I said, this was not a surprise. There are some other areas, and I should have stated this, but what is in red is a very high level of latent demand. And once you get into the lighter colors, your blue and light blue, that's your lower level of latent demand. So highlighting Ames Street that has a high level of latent demand, that's actually a corridor that we will be evaluating at a higher level coming up the next couple of years through a different study. And then another area, the, the, the western edge of the urban core also shows a very high level of, of lane demand. And this, both of the, not the Ames area, but the, the second area that was just shown here, we do have bicycle facilities existing today within that area, but the, the, the network is still being built out. Back to the state of demand, public engagement. We had six different pop-up events where we went up, went to existing neighborhood and community events, set up areas for the community to come up to us and, and for us to engage with the community and talk to them about their desires for bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure. We also held two open houses, one at the venue and one at the CEC at UNO. And then for the entire time, and it's still up today, we've had a website where we've engaged with the public. And then finally, we had an online questionnaire from October through December of the end of '22. And I get into that a little bit more. Again, eight events, 329 city residents that attended our meetings, and then we had over 500 online responses, which we felt was good. We always like talking to the community, what they would like to see in their community in the future. So what these four graphs are showing you is the existing versus desired level of service. So on the top is existing, the orange is walking, and the greenish color is bicycling. So as stated before, the average for existing was C level of service. And through engagement with residents, what they would like to see is a higher level of B. So, which to me is easier to obtain over time and is cheaper over time, but still better than where we are today. So one thing we had at some of these pop-up events and the, in the, in the town hall type meetings, we had maps. And so a lot of people came up and identified areas where they would want to see improvements. So again, in the, the purple, we got a lot of, we got a higher level of, of responses from the public, same with red. And then as you go down to that blue level, lower levels of responses. But you can kind of see, again, there was a lot of input around, in and around the urban core, as well as some parts of West Omaha, which is also good to see. So these were all based, based upon that revealed demand by the public. Chapter two really gets in the goals, objectives. It wouldn't be a good plan unless you had goals and then objectives that follow each of those goals. So a lot of this was built upon that public engagement by, through our engagement with the community. Chapter three gets into network improvement. So again, back to that facility selection, prioritization, and implementation. And on facility selection, it gets through, it gets through the ideas of talking about sidewalks, bike lanes, separated bikeway, which has that vertical barrier between the, the facility and the, either the parking lane or the travel lane, multi-use trail, and then a buffered bike lane. So separated and buffered are very similar. Separated has that vertical barrier in between. So what we, what the consultant did, I shouldn't say we, but what the consultant did through those 500 miles of arterial and collector segments, roadway segments, they, they identified what type of facility would work best. And so that, that, all, all that work has been done. That's in, in, in an appendix of the plan. About 20% of those segments, at, at this time, we're not able to identify what type of facility that should have. Further study is needed. So we'll have to, to go back after this plan is implemented, hopefully approved, and implement, and when we get into implementation, we'll do high-level corridor studies on that 20% of roadway segments. Again, the best way, the best way for a plan to work is start to prioritize. What should you implement first and go down the list. So of all 4,000 segments, what the consultant did was utilize this priority score of benefits over cost per mile. And the benefits included improvement to accommodation for bikes and pets, that latent man that was just discussed, state of demand, the creation of connectivity of the system, and then serve transportation disadvantaged areas. So through that calculation, we were able to come up with a list of projects by priority. And this is a map of those projects by priority. Again, the purple is a higher priority. And yet as you go down the scale to that greenish turquoise color, those are less of a priority at this point in time. And so that was bicycles and this is pedestrians. Again, the purple is that higher priority. Chapter four got into policies and programs. So the consultant team reviewed our municipal code, comprehensive plan, and all of our other programs and policies that affect active mobility, and provided recommendations on changes that we could make as a community to strengthen this plan as we move forward. So as an example, you see that there's a recommendation there, the year that we should start to work on that, who is the, the lead, and then who is our partner to help us fulfill this recommendation. And then finally, in chapter five, implementation and funding, there are two buckets, two ways to implement the plan through city-led projects, through our CIP, through what's called a routine accommodation. And what that means is really as we maintain our street system, as we resurface streets on an annual basis, which we do have done for quite some time, we can start to accommodate some of these bicycle facilities in that resurfacing package. We've done that for quite some time. And so that's a really easy way and affordable way to start to implement this plan. But like I said, we've been doing this for quite some time. It's a partnership between Public Works and Planning that's been really successful. Grants and special funding that we're able to obtain. And then through private development, as we see redevelopment and new development, start to incorporate these facilities into our community. Then lastly, and most important, is maintenance. We always have to have an eye on maintenance for long-term care of, of the infrastructure that we put into place. So like I said, the plan was completed on March 8th. We opened it up for public comment for about a month. We received all of 13 comments. I think that's a good thing. Most of the comments were in support and want to see this plan implemented, implemented as soon as possible. And again, that was done through an online forum through the website. And then finally, it should be mentioned, so, and I mentioned it earlier, but Vision Zero Plan was approved last year. One consultant was on both teams that worked on Vision Zero and this plan, and there's strong alignment between our active mobility plan and Vision Zero. So I'm glad we were able to have some overlap between the two plans. And so both plans are, are basically saying the same thing. So that was a lot of information really quickly. You've heard it twice now. So if you have any new questions, I'm happy to answer those questions.
Any questions for Derek? Thank you, Derek.
Thank you.
Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, closed public hearing. Additional comments, questions from the board? Eric, did you want to add anything?
Nope. Obviously, the team and all city staff who've been working on this project have been working on it for a, a long time, put in a lot of hard, hard work and effort. So that is appreciated. And we look forward to taking this to city council here in the near future and then continue onward and begin implementing wherever that opportunity arises. So staff recommends approval.
Do we have a motion?
Move approval of the ConnectCo Omaha Active Mobility Plan?
Motion and second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Morris?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Soto Longo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved seven to zero.
Agenda item number eight, case C3-24-144. Applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha, request approval of the 2024 annexation package. Location southeast of 180th and Maple Crossing, lots one through seven, outlots A and B, southeast of 180th Street and West Maple Road. Are you taking this, Eric?
I am, yes. Yeah, so every year, the planning department in coordination with finance department, mayor's office, and other departments, take a look at which areas and SIDs are in a financial position to be able to annex into the city. So we have a very small package this year, which is the southeast corner of, of 180th Street and West Maple Road. More specifically, this is the side of the new Costco, which is opening up next month. So there are seven commercial-platted lots, including the Costco lot and two outlots, which would be part of the package. And we are. which would be part of the package, and we are requesting for your approval. It, you know, I guess just, there's not a lot of details, there's obviously zero population because this is not a residential area, but it's 32 acres of land, seven, nearly $8 million in real estate and property value at this time, with several lots still to be developed. And the site and, and the area is projected for a 10-year cost revenue of a positive in several millions of dollars, so.
Any proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, a closed public hearing? Additional comments, questions from the board? I'll give my usual comment, I'm going to spare the board and everybody else my usual speech on annexation. I will be voting no, just from the standpoint, standpoint of my personal beliefs, but I'll spare everybody my, my speech this year.
Appreciate your consistency.
Do we have a, do we have a motion?
I move to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Pete?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Roseacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to one.
Agenda item number 13, case C3-24-145. Planning Department, on behalf of the City of Omaha, request approval of the North 38 Active Redevelopment Project Plan. Location 2232, 2253, 2257, and 2261 North 38th Avenue. And Don, you're up.
Yeah, thank you. Good afternoon, Don Seaton, City Planning. This project involves four vacant, single-family lots located in a single-family neighborhood of North Omaha, along North 38th Avenue, just a little south of Lake Street. Holy Name Housing will construct four single-family homes on, on these four lots, one on each lot. Each house will be about 1,600 square feet with four bedrooms. These units will be affordable housing rental units, available for households with incomes at or below 80% of the area median income. This project is in an extremely blighted area, so the TIF term will be 20 years rather than the 15-year term. The developer's Holy Name Housing Corporation, Matthew Kavanaugh is the CEO, represents an investment of about $1.1 million in the neighborhood. They're asking for $175,000 in TIF support. Project meets the required criteria, the TIF plan has been approved by the TIF committee, it's an appropriate land use for the area, and it complies with the goals of the city's master's plan. Here's a bit of what the houses will look like. We ask for your approval.
Thanks, Don. Any other proponents?
Good afternoon, Matthew Kavanaugh, Executive Director of Holy Name Housing Corporation, 4324 Fort Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68111. This is a nice, small TIF project in this area of focus for us. This is, will be maintained as rental project, will probably be in front of you hopefully in a few weeks with another complimentary project that will be more infill housing that will actually be for sale. So they kind of go together, but because this one, the tendency is different with rental compared to homeownership, we split them apart at the request of the planning department. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Matthew. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, closed public hearing? Additional comments, questions? Eric?
Yeah, just obviously, there's a great need for affordable housing, and we always appreciate working with our partners, including Holy Name Housing. Staff recommends approval.
Do we have a motion? Have a motion and second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Roseacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Thanks, Don. Agenda item number 18, case C10-24-141. Applicant Matthew Bates, request rezoning from R435 to R6. Location 7096 Benny Street. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Hello, my name's Matthew Bates, representing L&amp;R Capital. Purchased a, a street right on the, right north of Maple and 72nd. It's right behind a Speedy Mart and Russell Speeders. He wants to change from R4 zoning to R6 for duplex, triplex conversion. I'm not too sure what to say. Sorry, board.
Whatever else you want to say.
I also want to say, Mr. Sotolongo, your commencement CHPD was a great one. Yeah.
Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, a closed public hearing? Additional comments, question? Jorge, you sure you don't want to say anything? I'm teasing you. Eric?
Yeah, so we did not have this on consent because we kind of have a denial approval, and so let me just briefly touch on that. So the future land use element of the city's master plan designates as property for low-density residential, which only supports zoning up to R5. And so we do not support the R6 zoning, however, due to recent code changes with accessory dwelling unit language, we do, we are able to help the applicant out of still getting that third unit. It's, you know, it's just kind of in the wording, I guess, but we are supportive of the R5 zoning, which allows for a duplex, duplex along with an internal ADU. Obviously, this duplex is not a side-by-side unit that you typically think of. It's, you know, I don't know the configuration, if it's up-down, but they're both within the same structure and allowing, an internal ADU would be allowed subject to those new requirements in that section. So with that being said, staff recommends denial of the rezoning from R435 to R6, but approval of the rezoning from R435 to R5.
Do we have a motion?
I move for the denial of the rezoning from R435 to R6 and the approval of the rezoning from R435 to R5.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Roseacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Agenda item number 23, case C8-24-133. Applicant Kelsey Slabatsky, request approval of a special use permit to allow, to allow large group living in the R2 district. Location 10214 Elm Street. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Hi, Kelsey Slabatsky, 10624 South 190th Street, owner, operator of the property. Here to answer any questions?
What are you going to do there?
Yeah, so it is a, called Legato Living, it's a franchise, it's a local franchise. The franchise owner, sitting behind me, and it is going to be a home for seniors with dementia.
Can you operate already?
I personally do not, but we do have other locations. There are three other locations in Omaha, and then there's one in Bellevue currently.
So Kelsey, just as a follow-up to that Legato, do they have specific standards that you must operate under kind of the umbrella?
Correct.
If you could just touch on that briefly for us? Thank you.
I guess, standards, yes, we'll be following the guidelines that Aaron set. So up to 10 residents. Another guideline is two staff members during the day, one staff member at night. That keeps the ratios of five to one during the day, one to 10 at night, if anyone is familiar with other assisted living homes, nursing homes, those ratios are one to 20 or even greater. So the standard of care being provided is much, much higher, while keeping the residents with dementia in a home-like setting, which is easier and for them to live out.
So if there are other dementia units around Omaha, right? And this, these are fairly small.
Correct.
How do you get referrals to your?
Correct. So I'm looking for 10 residents, so yes, small. We do have other locations. We, there's a 14-bed home in Elkhorn, and then there is a 12-bed home in West Omaha, and a nine-bed home in Northwest Omaha currently. A lot of the referrals actually come from some of the bigger box, excuse me, locations because they're, seniors with dementia sometimes struggle in the bigger box settings. They're left alone in their rooms, they're clearly in a structure building that they're not used to being in, they can get aggravated more easily. So the home-like setting has been shown to be more comforting to them. There's also getting that care, like I mentioned, that one to five ratio, you know, they're not in a huge setting where the worker's having to run down the hall and come back. And so referrals will actually come from those locations if they have someone living there who isn't thriving. So we'll work with them, and then obviously word of mouth. I think once you see the model and you walk through a home, and you realize like, no, this is where I'd rather have my parents or relative live out the end of their life, this feels like their home that they, I just had to take them from, except they're getting that individualized care 24/7.
Full service, too.
Correct. Yep, help them with activities of daily living.
And these are fully secure?
Yes, so there'll be mag locks on all the doors, sprinkler system, fire alarm system.
The, the 14-bed unit in Elkhorn, where's that? Is that the one on 192nd? That's not that big, is it?
It's.
That is that?
Oh.
Okay. Yeah, I got to say, I, I drive by that. I didn't know it was a house, you know, for Alzheimer's dementia. You'd never know it.
And that's kind of what we're going for.
Yeah.
We want it, we want it to be known by word of mouth, not by sight.
Yeah. I like what you guys do.
Look and feel.
It's, I just went through, I had a 100-year-old mother that was going to go into and having a, down in Arizona, but having a facility like this, it really is much easier on those patients than going into some of the large, large facilities that they, you know, you have to go into.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, a closed public hearing? Any additional comments, questions from the board? Eric?
Yeah, so I don't have a lot to add. With this use type, there are several items that are laid out in the supplemental use regulations of the zoning code. So it is rather detailed as far as the submittal. We've received all of the information that we need. It's clear of how the operator is functioning. So parking is being met on-site. So there is, you know, there's ample parking, both in the back as well as a longer driveway. So there's not a lot that would be needed before going to city council. So staff recommends approval of a special use permit to allow large group living in the R2 district, subject to the five conditions in the report.
Do we have a motion? Motion to approve special use permit to allow large group living in the R2 district, subject to the five items in the staff report. Second. We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Roseacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Agenda item number 24, case C8-24-136. Applicant Legato Real Estate 1 LLC, request approval of a special use permit to allow large group living in the R2 district. Location 8504 Douglas Street.
Hi, good afternoon, Erin Render, 1-8517 Hampton Drive, Omaha, 68136. Very, I mean, similar to what Kelsey said, this is a separate project that is, just happens to be the timing aligning. So not a lot to add. I definitely can't answer any additional questions.
Any questions for her?
Do you own any of the other properties that are actually available?
I did, yes, until last May. And then that is when we chose to, one of, having worked in senior care for my entire career, one of the things that we, or that I had seen early on and have continued to see throughout the almost 20 years, is that a lot of times the management and the oversight of these long-term care facilities is constantly changing. I think as a, the general public just assumes it's the caregivers that have turnover, but the management is just as much. And I was one of six in six years when I started. And so I was looking for ways to grow, and that's why we've chosen to grow through franchising, so that we can continue to have those owner and operators overseeing those locations versus opening up homes everywhere and hoping that the management was doing what they should. So we want to be good neighbors, which is again, one of the reasons that we chose to grow this way versus growing, you know, just by hiring managers.
How are the homes being managed? Do you hire companies? Do you have to, or are you here?
It's up to the individual owners. The one home that most people know of is the one across from Lakeside, just because it sits on a main road.
168th Street.
Yeah. But it kind of depends when we owned them. My husband loves his lawn work, so he did his own, but most of them do hire it out. And obviously, you know, these homes are all regulated by the state of Nebraska, and so we need to maintain those standards as well as being, you know, a very, you know, nice-looking home on the block to attract potential residents.
Is that intentional to be nearby healthcare facilities? I'm trying to think of what's on the agenda today, is that close to street or method of?
It is very close, and it is not intentional, and a lot of times, that's, you know, many people think that. The one thing that's different from our model is that because these residents have dementia and oftentimes, you know, environments like hospitals, doctors' offices, things like that can be very over-stimulating for them. And so we try at all costs to make sure that the residents are treated within the home versus having to go out. So it's very rare that we're using, you know, 911 services or that we're sending residents, you know, back and forth to the hospital or even doctors. We have house providers that come in and will see the residents.
And families free to come and go?
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah.
So Erin, I don't, I don't know if this is a fair question to ask or not, but you seem like you've been in the industry for quite some time. What is the growing need for a community? Obviously, we do have an aging population, not like some parts of, like Europe or certain Asian countries, but, you know, I've heard there's continued to be a growing need for both these home facilities and larger facilities. I don't know if you have any comments on that?
I think the one thing I would say, and this is, I'm not good at memorizing statistics, but this one will, will never leave me, but currently, according to Alzheimer's Association, one in three seniors dies with some form of dementia. And so if we're seeing that now, obviously, we all know how things are trending. So yes, being able to provide these options is, you know, really important for families, especially as they're, you know, having so much guilt of having to place their loved one. This is often a much, you know, there's, there's hardly, besides these types of settings, there's very few options where someone's going to move in their loved one and be able to have that owner's phone number. And so just that peace of mind is really what's most important.
Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents?
Good afternoon, my name's Nick McCrake. I live at 8617 Douglas Street. And I oppose this based off of the property being zoned residential, zoning. I think they're trying to sidestep the zoning requirements, and I was also going to bring up the building code requirements, but she said that they were going to have fire sprinklers and fire alarms in there. There is a property in this neighborhood at, let's see here, 407, oops, 407 South 86 Street. This is also a memory care property, and they actually got the property rezoned to multi-community. multi-community. And it's listed as nine units now. So I guess I would like an explanation of why a special use permit would be used instead of rezoning the property and actually setting it up to house ten people. There could potentially be safety issues with having so many people in a house if there's a fire and, you know, how to get them out and stuff like that, so. I just think this panel needs to like reconsider it and kind of look at the building codes and the zoning requirements that need to be done. And I guess I would also ask to get some explanation on a special use permit compared to rezoning it.
Any other opponents?
My name's Proctor, sorry. I'm a little bit into that.
Could you say that again?
Ben Proctor.
Ben?
Yep, eighty-six twenty-seven Douglas Street. We had a couple of other neighbors that wanted to come as well, but just the timing of the day, they weren't able to come, so they asked me to carry a couple of their remarks as well. First, Nick mentioned that there's another property in the neighborhood that similar service, so it's a memory care. I'm not sure if it's the same company or not. But there is a school that's located right here, just right around the corner, an elementary school. Our neighborhood, I understand that, that it's being presented as a fairly low traffic visitors, but I'm, I'm a little concerned about parking. The home is situated, so it has a side-load garage. It's a little shorter driveway. I think that we're gonna have some overflow parking on the streets. We have some traffic issues in the mornings when it comes to the schools. Drop-off, we have a lot of kids walking, there's no sidewalks in the neighborhood too, so it's a little bit of a, a safety concern first. Also, the, the property that we mentioned on eighty-sixth, I'm, I'm sure your employees will be outstanding, but we do have, those employees do come through the neighborhood, and we've had some issues with them in the past for this other facility, parking, running through the neighborhood quickly with kids walking on the streets. Again, we're not, I don't think we're in objection to what the use is or what the benefits of the use are. We're just questioning if this property is the right one for it. Like I said, the parking on each side, these folks will certainly have visitors. If you have ten folks there and two, two caretakers, twelve, now if we have visitors on top of that, we have question if the, if the driveway is gonna house parking. And then also, I'd, I'd like to just echo what Nick's comments were as well. The other home that's around the corner, I know from neighbors that have been there for a long time, that there was a process, there were some objections from the neighbors, and the property had to be rezoned. So I think that kind of summarizes most of the comment, most of our concerns. I think a lot of it has to do with safety, we've got, it's a, it's a really, a lot of families in this neighborhood, a lot of young children, and like I said, no sidewalks.
Just a quick question for you, Ben.
Sure.
When you're talking about parking and school kids walking and safety and everything, and we talked a little bit about this in our pre-meeting. If a family moved in that house with six kids or whatever, you know, middle school through high school.
Sure.
You'd have way more traffic than what this house will produce.
I'd have to disagree with you, sir. If you live there with six children, you'd walk out your front door with your car parked in your garage, and you'd walk to the school.
Okay, is it a high school or junior?
It's an elementary school, Swanson Elementary.
Kids grow up and they're all driving and their friends are over?
Sure.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, I, and I have high school age kids, and they drive and their friends are over. They're parked in our driveway, our house is on a normal setback. If you'd like, if you look at the, I can put an aerial under this thing, I suppose. But like I said, this is a side-load. And it's not a typical setback where our driveway, you can see the neighbor's driveway here, can house plenty of cars. So if I've got a high school student and she wants to have three of her friends over, we can fit those cars there. Little different situation here.
Okay, looks like there's plenty of width though on that. Parking, you get quite a few cars.
Yeah, sure, I suppose, if you wanna, if you wanna toggle sixteen-year-old kids on that short driveway, that's, that's fine. But again, I just, I think my concerns are, are genuine. We live there, we see it every day. And we just, again, it's not an objection to the use or what their, what their purpose is. I think it's just the result of what the use is gonna be, you're gonna put ten people in a single-family home with caretakers and visitors coming and going. The parking's also restricted on both of these streets as well. There's no parking on one side of, one side of the street on, on each, on, so on eighty-sixth and on Douglas. And then also, as you move around the corner on eighty-sixth as well.
But, but you can park on one side of the street?
You can park on one side for two hours.
Okay.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents?
Hi there, my name's Peyton Hostins, I work at Abraham's, Caslow and Cassman, our address is eighty-seven twelve West Dodge Road. I am here on behalf of the neighbor that is immediately west. He lives at eighty-five fourteen Douglas. His name is Bud Nelson, he's the trustee of the trust that owns the home. His concerns are, are really just, he's just a little worried about the special use hurting the value of his house, whether the home can be, you know, used for something else if this venture does not work out. And then he just had a few questions, kind of touched a little bit on the security, but just wondering, you know, whether there will be residents living in the basement and there is a door out to the basement, that's kind of on a different level than the, the main door, and with only one person there at night, kind of how that security will be managed. And then, I guess, with the franchise relationship, who will be the owner of the home? And if there will be any leasing arrangements or anything, I'm just kind of curious about that, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Peyton. Any other opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Before we hear from, oh, Erin, yes.
So unfortunately, I don't have a pin, but I will try to remember what, what some of the points are that I can touch on. As far as the parking, I know that we do have a separate hearing next week for that. One of the things that I would like to point out in regards to parking in hours of when the higher traffic hours are, the shift changes are usually seven AM. And so those two staff that would be arriving would most likely already be there before school is starting. And a lot of times, the, you know, we need to keep in mind that these residents generally wake up later, you know, mid-morning, and go to bed much earlier than the rest of us. So usually by evening, a lot of that traffic has, you know, died down. Now, I'm not gonna say that that is the case every day. You know, you may be having someone that's moving in, but generally, the mornings and the evenings are very, very quiet. And so the, you know, the garage is actually a three-car garage with the four-car like tandem on that third stall. And so the staff would be parking in the garage. The garage is not going to be converted to bedrooms. In fact, the home is large enough to accommodate, so we would not be making any modifications. So there would be plenty of parking in that garage, leaving the three-car width of the, of the driveway. And then I know that they said that this doesn't technically count under city standards, but there is a round driveway to the side too, that would accommodate a car or two. In regards to the special use permit versus rezoning, large group and small group living, I mean, I guess I don't need to go into that, but it is allowed in the zoning code for this zoning. We, we do know that there is another home there, and in fact, we originally had, were going to apply for eight residents. But in eight residents, this is allowed. However, because that home is within the six hundred feet that is stated in the zoning code, that's why we needed to come forth with the application. And so since we needed to go through the entire process, that's why we decided with the home being as large as it is, that we might as well go for large group living. Because then it will allow us flexibility in the number of residents that we serve. So that's kind of the backstory on why we chose to go this direction. It's my understanding that had that home not been within those six hundred feet of this particular location, we would not have had to go through this process as all, at all. Is that correct? Okay, and then was there anything?
Ownership.
Yes, yes.
Security.
So there's no, even though the basement is gorgeous, there is no plans right now to use the lower level at all, obviously. Stairs is, is an issue, and so we are just, you know, looking based on the square footage of the main level. Again, security is very important, so the doors will be secured using the magnetic locks. Keep in mind, these residents move slow, they're not coming and going all day like, I know I have four children and it's constant chaos. And so the back patio is also very enclosed, and so that would be the primary location that residents would spend for outdoor time.
How is that back area secured then?
It is an enclosed deck. The lower level, yes, but the, to get to the lower level, that will always be locked off. So the residents will only be on the main floor.
Is there usually a staff member with them when they're outside, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And, you know, in terms of, I know there was a comment about, you know, night staff and how that works, that is, that always fluctuates. You know, most of the time, by the time these residents get settled in, they are all sleeping very, you know, through the night. If they are up, it's one or two of them, and they were helping get them a drink of water, just like we would at our own homes. And so, but there are times that maybe there would be a second staff member, so. And it's all gonna depend on, you know, resident need.
Back to? Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Can you discuss a little bit about the, the visitor policy or what a typical day looks like for residents that want to have visitors come?
So we see a couple of things. The, you know, there might be residents that are receiving hospice services, and so there might be some short in-and-out visits by providers through a hospice company. As far as visitors go, families do, I, I have found, having worked in bigger facilities till, to doing these, families do feel more comfortable coming to visit in these settings because they really get to know the rest of the residents, they get to know the staff versus larger places where they're going to a room at the end of a hall and having their visit. The other thing to keep in mind, though, is that these are not extensive, long visits that these families are having. Unfortunately, many of these residents are no longer able to visit very well, or the attention span isn't there, or they maybe won't even sit down to have a conversation. So a lot of times, it's families just coming in to, you know, pop in, lay eyes on their loved one. And again, there's exceptions, but these visits are definitely not as extensive as you may see with an older adult who is still able to really sit and have those long conversations and visits.
What, you, I know you're not gonna be able to give me what a typical, what, what does, how many cars do you generally see at a facility like this in a day?
In a day?
Yeah.
Every day is so different. And it really depends on, you know, how many people are living there, on, you know, if they're receiving any services, but.
So you have, when you say receiving any services, you have nurses or somebody that?
What I mean by that is if someone, just like in our, you know, like hospice services, those services can be provided at any location, just like our own homes. And so if there's a provider that's coming to see a resident towards the end of life, you know, those types of people would be coming. But the actual staff members, you know, those are twelve-hour shifts, really to minimize that change and shift to be able to provide that consistency throughout the day for those residents versus doing a bunch of little.
And they're gonna park in the garage, your staff will?
Yes, and there's four spots in there.
Okay, and did you say there's a circular drive in the front of this?
There's, it attaches to the main, but I was told that that doesn't count as a required parking, but I assume we'll still be able to use it.
Yeah, gotcha.
Yeah. Right, but like I said, it's very, you know, most of the residents don't get up before nine or ten, and most of them, the visitors are all gone by dinnertime because they sleep a lot and, yeah.
Yeah.
So as far as ownership and management of the home, I wanted to touch on that. I'm here representing this particular property because my business partners and I have decided to purchase this property with the plan of renting it to the franchise owner. So we have some franchisees that buy their own homes, such as Kelsey, and then we have others that have chosen to rent the property from us. So again, though, it's the same standards. They, it's not your typical renter, it's not, you know, Airbnb with people coming and going. It's someone who is renting this property with the purpose of making sure that it stays on the up and up and as beautiful as it already is, so that it can continue to attract residents, new residents, and continue with the, you know, the good word of mouth that we've already created in the community.
Any additional questions for Erin? Do you feel like you've addressed Ben and Nick and Peyton's?
Other, I, did I hit on everything? The zoning, did you wanna touch on?
I'll touch on.
Eric will get that.
Okay.
These fire sprinklers.
I'll touch on that too.
Okay.
Okay.
Good, thank you, Erin.
Thanks, Erin.
Any additional comments or questions? Eric?
Yeah, so this property is zoned R two. The other facility located at four oh seven South Eighty-Sixth Street is also zoned R two, so that, that property was not rezoned. In my recollection, and I was talking to, to the planning director back there, he actually has history with when that facility at four oh seven South Eighty-Sixth came on board. He attended a neighborhood meeting with a member of the city council staff at that time, probably about sixteen years ago or so. So I, I can't speak for Director Fanslaw, but I, I know that he brought that up when we're reviewing this property. So I believe that facility is a small group living disabled, which is defined as between four and eight individuals living with a handicap. Handicap can be physical, it can be mental, there are certain protected classifications defined by the federal government and federal law. Of course, people living with dementia or Alzheimer's are living with handicap, but there's other categories as well. I don't know all the specifics on four oh seven, the other site, because that's not what is before us today. But it is accurate that if there was going to be a small group living vicinity within six hundred feet of another small group living vicinity, it is allowed, but it is subject to the special use permit process, just as Erin had mentioned in her testimony. So either, whether it be between four and eight individuals, or whether it was the large group living, which is defined as nine or more, it doesn't have that handicap component with large group living, but it, but it still can apply to the situation. Either one of those would require the special use permit. So that is a process that is allowed by the zoning code, and, and that is what is being followed. It's, it's not a sidestep or not a zoning. You know, there's no shenanigans, it's, it's a clear process that's laid, laid out by the zoning code. We receive at the planning department an application for the monthly planning board. We make a recommendation to the planning board. Their vote is also a recommendation for a special use permit. Ultimately, city council has the final authority on special use permit. So I just, I, I think that touches on the zoning. If there are any follow-up questions from board members, you can, you can circle back to me on that. As far as permits and inspections, this facility will be required to comply with all of the applicable building code classifications. I'm not an expert in those, and those can vary based on who the residents.
I'm not an expert in those, and those can vary based on who the residents are. But typically, when you have people living with dementia and Alzheimer's who cannot, you know, they need assistance if there was a fire or an emergency, there are higher levels of building codes, such as sprinkler systems and... But all of those requirements, whatever applies, will be part of the process in the, in the permitting and will be required to be done with those appropriate permits before the house could be operated. And it would have a certificate of occupancy, which is basically a final inspection of different individuals within the permitting section of the department. As far as the parking, so yes, there, there is ample parking. However, there is a code provision currently in place with the zoning code that says for a large group living use, you cannot count parking in the front yard or the street-side yard setback. This is actually a provision that staff is currently reviewing and looking at changing, not specifically just related to group living, but that also applies to multifamily developments, whether it's an apartment project, and we've consistently supported waivers of that code section. It also, you know, there's an example of a single-family home, so just this neighborhood, you're not allowed to count as an official parking stall if you're in a front yard setback. So this neighborhood is zoned R2, so there's a forty-foot front setback requirement. I assume most of the houses are built to that setback, but I'm not sure. But for example, you cannot count that forty feet of driveway to count as a, as an official parking stall when you look at single-family use, or, you know, like I said, the other multifamily. Daycares has the same thing, large group and small group living. So we're looking at modifying that section for a, a multitude of reasons. You know, there was the TIP request that was earlier that was providing affordable housing, those just had one-car garages. Those will not meet the requirements of, of the zoning code for parking standards based on that provision, so they will have to seek a waiver. However, you know, like I said, we are currently reviewing that code section and going to propose an amendment that may be on the agenda as soon as next month or, or perhaps two months from now. So we are supportive of the waiver. There is ample room in the driveway so that cars aren't overhanging the sidewalk or out into the street. But we think that's an onerous code provision that is rather restrictive when you look at affordable housing, other uses, and so for that reason, we are supportive of the waiver. As Erin mentioned, is on the zoning board of appeals next week, I believe. There will be the requirement to install sidewalks along the street frontages for this property. Other than that, I don't have much to add unless you have specific questions. Anytime there is a use permit, we, to the extent feasible, we try to bring properties up to current standards and regulations. This neighborhood was platted and developed without sidewalks, but obviously, we want safe walking environments, and we take the opportunity when there is a special use permit or a plat or some other entitlement process that, that we can bring a property into compliance with our current codes. And for that reason, it's typical when you have a use permit without sidewalks that that would be a, a condition of approval.
I get that. No other sidewalks are in this neighborhood, or do we, it might have a few homes?
It could be scattered, I mean, there's a, it looks like a park.
Any connectivity of sidewalks?
No, but, I mean, you have to start somewhere unless it's done as a whole as a neighborhood. We, we try to piecemeal it together the best that we can, obviously, it, you know, it's a, it's a small matter when you look at a large neighborhood, but we do our best to, to bring it into compliance. So I'll read the recommendation, if you do have other questions, please ask. But staff recommends approval of the special use permit to allow large group living in the R2 district subject to the six conditions in the report.
Was there any comments? I thought I heard somebody, no? Okay. Do we have a motion?
I will move for the approval of the special use permit to allow large group living in the R2 district subject to meeting the following six conditions in the recommendation.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Moore? Morris? Payne? Sotolongo? Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
There's a couple people, were you here for a certain, nope, okay. Oh, okay. And everybody else was here for this last, okay, got it, alright. Do we have a motion on May's pre-meeting and public meeting minutes? We have a motion and a second, Kathy, please record the vote.
Morris? Payne? Sotolongo? Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin? Moore? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Do we have a motion for adjournment? We have a motion and a second, Kathy, please record the vote.
Payne? Payne? Sotolongo? Rosacker? Franklin? Moore? Morris? Mr. Chair? Approved, seven to zero.